How important this race is. It's probably the most critical race for our community of all of the elected positions. So these are the people that we come to with just about everything that, you know, is wrong in our community. And unfortunately, lately, there have been a lot of things that are issues of concern. So we need to have a good candidate that listens and not only says yes, I understand, but has the wherewithal to actually act for us, to support us by actions, not by words. So we haven't had much of that in the past, unfortunately, and we learn from our mistakes. So now, we have to vet our candidates, we have to get to know our candidates, we have to ask them questions, we have to give them suggestions, we have to work together. And not only with our candidates, but with all of our communities. You know, it's not just, this is Waterbury LaSalle, it's basically Skylaville, but we get involved in Morris Park, we get involved in West Justice Square, we get involved wherever there's a problem, and they call us and we meet us. That's what we all have to do. So there's strength in numbers, and we have a lot of people that are concerned and are willing to get involved. So getting involved, I think, is important too. And that's one of the reasons why we started this procedure, this process, earlier than normally we would. And it's because we have a lot of candidates. We're going to have three this meeting, and then we're going to have four in April, on April 25th. And we didn't want to squeeze everybody in, because we wanted to give each candidate the time that they deserve, so that they could speak to us about their platform and take questions and take, you know, suggestions and not be rushed. And we'll do the same thing next month. Next month, we will have two Republican candidates and two Democratic candidates. This time, we have three Republican candidates. So, you know, we really have to get involved. And early on, we'll give you a chance to get to know everyone, and maybe you'll find your candidate early, and then you can get involved in their campaign. That's a way of getting involved in the community. And we hope that you will do that, because we have some great candidates. And I'm not going to go on too long, because I want to give them the opportunity to speak. Normally, I would speak about, you know, the issues in the neighborhood, we all know what they are, but I'm not going to do that, because I'm hoping that each candidate will speak about what they think is an issue in our community. And if they don't touch upon what you think is, you know, an issue, then that's the time to ask the question. I just want to go, before we begin, quickly as to how it's going to work. Each candidate will come up separately, they will speak about their platform, and then they'll take questions and give you the answers. And if they don't have the answers, then they'll find them out, and they'll give it to us, and we will disseminate it to you. We're going to go in alphabetical order, because we felt that was fair. And I know that I don't have to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, just to make sure. You know, this is a process where everyone is very emotional about it, and has their, you know, their ideas about what should happen and what should not happen. I want to make sure that when you ask your questions, that you are respectful, like we always are. You know, as I said, I don't think I have to say it, but being that this is the type of meeting that it is, I want to make sure that we all treat each other with respect. What's going on in the world today, you know, I think we should make a special effort, because it's not what we generally see. In this community, we are respectful, so let's make sure that we, you know, show our best face to our members and to the candidates. Okay. So I think, I think we should invite George up. George Haverneck is first.
Hello, everybody. Thank you all for coming out. I appreciate it. It's great to see all of you. And let me tell you a little bit about myself. My name is George Haverneck, GeorgeHav on Facebook, for those that follow Facebook. And I actually live on the other side of the highway. I'm from the Spencer Estate community, and currently, I am the president of the Spencer Estate Civic Association, which is a low-density area. And a low-density area is something that is very special to me, and as you guys might know, I was at the genesis of the Bruckner-Rupp Zone battle. I started the fight against the Bruckner-Rupp Zone and continued that fight, and continue it today along with other people. But a little bit about what I do on the other side of the highway. I mean, with the Spencer Estate Civic, being it's a small community, when we get a pothole, it's like a crater. That's what it is, because we're such a small community. Little change over there is a big change. And over the years, we have fought numerous things. You know, we've had absentee landlords, very big problem over there, as it is over here. What we did was establish a conduit, so that way we can communicate with our absentee landlords and resolve issues, because communication is very thick. Also, we had a problem with the MTA. They wanted to take away our bus stops that many of our seniors utilize. And we went and we looked at the redesign, went over it, and believe it or not, all we had to do was measure the street. They didn't do that. They sat in their offices, did a redesign, taking away eight crucial bus stops. We measured the street, showed them the bidirectional flow could not fit. And what happened? We beat the redesign. Why? Because we were diligent, and we care about our seniors. Also, you got to look at other things that went on over there. The absentee landlords, they tried to put in some transition housing. We went, we attacked them. Before they could get in, we kept them out. Because in a low-density community like that, with the absentee landlords, you end up with a lot of plus ones. Simply, a two-family comes a three-family, three-family comes a four-family, just like that. So we're very diligent and protective of our zoning. And that's one of my policy stances, is that I am very protective of zoning, our low-density zone. I believe our low-density communities are a slice of suburban that need to be cherished. It's sort of suburban life inside city environment, a slice, that's what it is. And it's something that we have to take very seriously. Because as my old friend told me once, Councilman DeMarco, you lose your zoning, you lose your community. Zoning is a community's best weapon against politicians and developers. That's why it's important to hold on to it. Very important. And we do whatever we have to do to hold on to our zoning. Unfortunately, we know, and we're not going to get too deep into that, because we're going to talk about policy, but we know what happened over here. We have a credibility issue with our current councilman. And one thing I can tell you about me is that I will be open and honest with you all the time. My years will carry your message into the council. I will be a conduit to communicate your message into that council. And one thing I can say is I'm not perfect, definitely not. If I do make a mistake, I can tell you this, one thing's for sure, it would be an honest mistake. A mistake that's honorable, that I would hold myself accountable for. And one thing I would do is admit it, and I would correct it, make it right. I would bring that into the city council. Another thing that, you know, talking around our community, being with low density, we don't have a lot of amenities. You know, they call us all kinds of deserts, transit deserts, food deserts, whatever. I consider us an oasis, but that's thought for another day. Bottom line is, many of our seniors, and residents actually, have to leave the community to do their shopping, their banking, go to the post office, which, by the way, if you tried to mail a letter today, you know what that's like. Glue on the mailbox all over, try and use a mailbox. We're living in a council district where you can't, even in the city, where you can't even use the mail, a mailbox. That's ridiculous. Public safety is a big thing for me, too. Now, public safety carries a lot of areas. I mean, you could look a lot of areas. Anybody could get up here and say, oh, we need more police. Of course we do. We all know that. Bottom line is, we know recruitment issues, not going to happen. We're not getting more. Plus, the metrics for the Big Seven in here are very low. So it's going to be very hard to warrant getting more police officers once the academies get there. So what do we got to do? We got to figure out a way. The anti-police sentiment is chasing our offices away. The attrition rate is very, very high. Many, many don't even make five years, and they look and leave. So what are we going to do? We got to implement some short-term fixes, but also long-term fixes. Because no matter how you look at it, the long term includes the short term. The short term does not include the long term. What you fix today, short-term, will resurrect. So we have to think about some programs. And we got to start with our kids. We need more dialogue, more engagement in our schools with NYPD and our students. That's important. It should go back to the days of yore, when a child at Christmas time opened the box and took pride in opening up unwrapping a police car or a fire alarm. We have to get rid of that sentiment in this city, and it's a bottom-up, top-down process. We also have to engage the parents. The parents at the top are going to dictate what happens with the children. But also, the children need to have a good mental representation, a good perception of what NYPD has to offer. So there would be programs that I would implement in order to create that type of feeling, that sentiment change. That's important. Also, public safety encompasses other things, environment. I spent some time in NYCHA recently. There are doors that don't close. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine your front door not closing? No reason for that. Courtyards are not well-lit. Seniors tell me they're afraid to go down Crosby Avenue in certain areas over there, too dark in there. We need better illumination. That's also part of public safety. It's not just getting more police. Also, we need more civic engagement. As we seen years ago, we used to have neighborhood watchers. Now, that's crucial, neighborhood watchers, well-trained neighborhood watchers. And there should be budget for that, and there will be budget for that, to properly train people that are willing and compliant to effectively patrol communities. And that way, when they see something, they could say something, that way, something can get done. Because 100% of the things that are not talked about don't get done. Planets. So that is important, as far as public safety goes. Now, while we're talking about education, education's important. And I believe in a very broad-spectrum ideology when it comes to education. We see our Catholic schools closing terribly, terribly. And some people, you know, they don't like the religion aspect. I get it, not everybody is religious. But what I say is this, every school can teach a system of values. Values do not get lost with religion. And one argument that I did have with somebody over this, I just said simple, the end of the argument was this, I want you to take the Ten Commandments. Take every commandment that mentions our Lord out. And what are you left with? A society that don't steal, a society that don't lie, a society that don't murder, et cetera. So it isn't about religion, it's about values. Values got to be taught in our schools, got to be taught in our homes. And that's important. We got to be able to have choices for parents, whether they want a homeschool, whether they want a charter school, whether they want to go to public school. It's fine, you should have school choice. But every school should be accountable the same way. Every school should be accountable. Even when you have homeschool parts, there's got to be accountability. Because simply, without accountability, there's a lack of responsibility and a lack of productiveness. We're not going to create productive members of society. So we have to look at all the aspects of education and embrace them. Don't throw them out. But you got to make sure they work, and you got to make sure there's accountability. And there are a lot of other things tethered to education. Education could bring good things. And for those who don't know, I used to run a program not far from here. I used to do free hockey clinics on Saturdays and on Monday afternoons for the children of our neighborhoods. And I wasn't trying to create NHL players. I always said that if somebody got to the NHL, it'd be despite me, not because of me. What I did with hockey was I took a sport, and I used the value of the sport to teach certain life lessons, to teach commitment, to teach teamwork, to teach honorability, to teach responsibility. And those were big things that the kids took away. And I met some of these kids not too long ago in Edgewater Park. I had a number. I had one kid that he wanted to be a goalie. Everybody wants to be a goalie when you're a kid. You know why? It's glam, you're putting on the equipment, it looks great. But with being a goalie comes responsibility. They put on that equipment, strapped it on, and what happens? Pucks start going in the net, teammates start looking at them. Next thing you know, oh my God, I don't want to do this anymore. And I never let a kid quit. I would talk to them, come, make them stay in that net to the end of the game, and made them feel proud that they stayed to guard that net as best as they could, no matter how many goals they gave up. And I also told their teammates, you think it's so easy? You put on this equipment. And you see how quick the children learn the lesson. So it's important that we teach and communicate. Now, also, we go around, we walk around, and we see a homeless situation. Homelessness is tough. Listen, there's nobody that really wants to be homeless. And there's really no one that wants to live in a community where you see overt homelessness. So I mean, there are things that we have to do in order to combat. We have to look at many creative thoughts, whether there's going to be some type of housing for them and services for them. And the one thing that I see tethered to homelessness is drugs. And one thing that I actually am working on now with a nonprofit, that we're in the talk stages, is that we're looking at a model to treat substance abuse. Because the model right now, the outpatient model that you see popping up when you had that thing on Williams Beach Road, and we had the 2800 Miracle City over there, that actually I was part of, and I was proud to be part of the group that defeated that very nefarious operation, that probably would have had like an 8% success rate, because that's what you're talking. And now, also, the other thing that should be brought to the forefront too is HHC, which I know is a problem over in Jacobin, that's another issue. But HHC actually got rid of all their outpatient detox centers in 2018, and no one talks about that. No one talks about that. Their inpatient detox, they got rid of. Every inpatient detox in the five boroughs, they got rid of. Why? They weren't making money. I propose a pilot program that we do proper drug treatment. We do inpatient treatment for 90 days, followed by proper aftercare. And it's very possible we could bring that 8% up to what would be a coin to us. And we would have a better community, we'd have more productive members of the community. And that's something worth investing in. Because also, many of our veterans suffer from substance abuse issues. And listen, our veterans would be a major part of that, too. Because we got to look after our veterans. They look after us. All right? They gave it up for our nation, the least we can do as a community is give it up for them. So veterans' needs got to be addressed in many, many ways. They have to be funded properly, they should not have to go bunny-hopping from doctor to doctor to doctor in search of services that prove to be elusive. We must take care of our veterans, and that is important. Now, on the housing forefront, we know, listen, not everything is going to be low-density. We know it. But in this city, we should have choice, we should have diversity. The city and all the agency heads, et cetera, and all the political machines want to say, oh, we need diversity. You're not diverse enough. Too many of this type of people, too many of that type of people. The bottom line is, okay, that's fine, you got diversity of population, especially in CD-13. Our diversity of population stats mirror that of New York City, it's amazing. You know, as far as the white, non-white population. So with the diversity, why can't you have diversity of living environment? Not everything needs to be built vertically. Vertical builds are not the solution, not the solution. Number one, we don't have infrastructure. Infrastructure's poor. And what they did to us is inconscionable. After Ida, death, destruction came to our city, death. Basement apartments, death. Right? So now, what does this inane city council want to do? Let's legalize the places where people died. Oh, that's a very, very smart thing to do, right? And the current controller, Brad Lander, he was the architect of Legislation 1004, which was a pilot program to do the additional dwelling units or basement apartments, which is now being modeled after the old loft law that they used in Greenwich Village, which is totally ridiculous. So what happens? We have this destruction, we have property damage all over the place. So they decide to give us some help. They give us help. All right? The homeowner's getting help, it's great. And then what does Controller Lander do? He cites a law that's 108 years old and takes away assistance, needed assistance, from middle-class, hard-working homeowners, 3,000 of them, with a swipe of a pen, he took it all away. That's totally crazy. We can't put up with that. And the city council is on board with that, our current council. Now, the seat is important, yes. Why? Despite what you might have heard in the news, the Progressive Caucus did not break up. You can't break up a mindset. You might break up the club, but you can't break up the mindset. The mindset is still there. Right now, they have veto-proof power. 34 out of 51 seats. Not good. This seat gets turned, with another projected turn in Queens, we break that stronghold. We break it. And that's one of the reasons the seat is important. Because you got to remember this, and this is something that you got to take away. A city council position, right? By definition, is not a city-wide position. It is not. A city council position is an area position. It is a district position. And the collective mindsets of 34 individuals should not be telling you, 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 what's good for your community, when you know what's good for your community. Should not be allowed. They are misusing their power. And through their policies that you see now, whether it's from the sanctuary city problem, where an influx of people keep coming in and coming in and coming in and feeding this purported housing crisis, what are they doing? To me, they are bad landlords, treating us like peon tenants, and it's just a form of constructive eviction. They are trying to make us leave. My stance is this, it's time to stand up and fight and avoid the flight. Plain and simple, stand strong, stand tall, hold on to your homes, hold on to your community. And how can we do this? Simple. We need to do it together. Because the bottom line is, community is common unity. That's for sure. That is my mantra. Community is common unity. And it is all of you, every one of you, that puts that you in community and puts that you in unity. And that's how it works. Now, with the common unity, that brings us to another mantra. Inclusion brings solutions. It is all of us together that is going to be able to do this. And I know things are tough. I hear from people, I run my civic, I hear from people, why are things so high? Oh my God, I can't live. I can't afford this, I can't afford that. Inflation's through the roof, prices are through the roof. They want to make Con Ed a bill. Listen, I'm no fan of Con Ed, got to be honest. But let me give you a little secret. After Ida, I say this, not either, I say this, where we had the high winds, a lot of damage, there were statewide hearings with Control of Denali, which I was privileged to attend. And what I heard was very disconcerting. This was statewide, and I would say 75% of the politicians and agency heads that testified there, besides calling Con Ed a racist company, they did, you can look at the tape, they want to take control of the energy grid. That is their goal. They want the energy grid. You can believe what you want, but I'm telling you, that's the endgame. They want the energy grid. With the energy grid comes a lot of power and control. You think you can't afford things now? Oh my God, you're going to be lucky if when you turn the lights which on, lights come on 100% of the time. You're going to have a lot of problems. So the bottom line is, the government here, the council, and even at state levels, they're going above and beyond what their call of duty supposed to be. They have a fiduciary responsibility to you stakeholders, to all of you. The way you give your money to an investment guy to hold on to it, he has a fiduciary responsibility. You are giving your community to your council member, a city member, and other elected officials. And they got to protect you. You don't got to protect them, they got to protect you. They have the fiduciary responsibility, the obligation, the responsibility to make sure your investment, your emotional and financial investment stays sound. It has to. That is their job, that is their duty. And we also have a job. Our job is that of our predecessor. Those that preceded us handed us something beautiful. That is the truth. We were handed nice community. We are duty-bound and obligated to hand something better off to the next generation. And they, in turn, would then have to have that same responsibility. That is our duty and that's our job. But how can we do our job if the people above us setting the policies that are slanting the playing field so badly that we can't even stay on the surface? We can't. We need change, and we need change now. I definitely could bring that change. I could bring that change into the council, because I would be your voice. I will give everything I have. I will be accountable. I will be responsible. I will have an obligation to all of you to do what's right, to make sure that we procure what is needed and stave off the unwanted. Now, in closing, I have another mantra. If we want to keep and reap the benefits of our fine quality of life, all of us must in... all of us must endure the fatigue of supporting it. Because like I said, it's all of you that put the you in community. It's all of you that put the you in unity. And together, inclusively, we can make this work. We can make this community strong. We can take this seat. God bless you. I thank you for letting me talk. And I appreciate all of you coming out to here tonight to listen to me and to the other candidates. Thank you. Now, I understand that there is a Q and A portion. Do I take that now?
Yes.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi, my name's Anthony. Everything you mentioned involved money, okay? One thing you didn't mention on the area, you didn't touch on was the migrants, the illegal that have come into the city and all the resources that the city is giving them. Okay, I'm a veteran, and I know a lot of homeless veterans. And just to touch on the substance abuse issue, there's no detoxes, all right? If a veteran comes into the Bronx DA with a substance abuse issue, they put him in psych water. Even though he might not belong there, that's where they put him. But then back to the migrant issue. My parents came here in the early 50s from Sicily with two of my older brothers. My father borrowed $200 from my uncle, paid him back. Back then, you needed a sponsor, you needed a job lined up, and you needed a place to stay, okay? And my father was able to get those three things because of my uncle, you know? And it's hard to watch the news and see that all these things, these freebies that these migrants are getting. For what? For showing up. That's all they're doing, is showing up, you know? And like I said, you touched on a lot of things that I could go on. Ronald Reagan said, "The government is the problem." Okay? That elected officials, when they get elected and go to Washington, they act like we work for them rather than they work for us, you know? And it's gonna be a long fight. We got, you use the word "we." "We" is very important, you know, right? Can't be "I," can't be "you" by yourself. It's gotta be "we," us together, to fight and stand up and what we believe. I'm a Republican. I'm not a Democrat, you know? And I'm a conservative also, you know? But it just irks me to watch the news and see all these migrants being welcomed when they step off the bus. And I'm not saying they shouldn't be helped, but get online like the rest of us, like the rest of them.
In the interest of time, I wanna ask you that when you ask a question, if you could just ask one question to begin with and try to be as curt as possible, because we have two other candidates that we wanna give them time to speak and to get questions as well.
Anthony, I appreciate your question very much. And your question, I did touch on it just a little bit with the sanctuary city policy and the homelessness and the housing crisis. But your point hits me here. I have a daughter-in-law from Ecuador, dentist in Ecuador. She can't even mop a floor here. Why? She's trying to do it the right way. Right way. She got on the back of the line. My daughter-in-law's a dentist, a trained dentist, and cannot mop the floor because of the current laws. They are inane, these laws. She can't make a living. She's gotta wait probably another two years. Because if she goes and takes a work visa, her clock starts again. So your point hits me home. It really does. I see. Every day, they look upstairs for me. I see what it does. Could I tell you I can stop this individually? No, I cannot. I'm not going to lie to you. The sanctuary city policy is just fostering so many other issues. And I think it's a crazy issue. It's a crazy policy. That along with Green Light New York, which Senator Sepulveda said was going to be a financial windfall for New York City and New York State. The senator said this, and he's a lawyer, okay? Those two policies are nuts, you know? And we were like, okay, what are you trying to do? We know what they're trying to do. They're trying to establish a bigger voting block, Anthony. That's what they're trying to do. The congressional seat lost. They want 1.2 million people back in New York City alone by the next census. They want that congressional seat back and two more. 775,000 people make a congressional district. That's the game plan. They want more people, more political power, more power in Albany that we generate from New York City. How can we stop it? We gotta start turning seats at the lowest level, at the council level. That's it. Can I do it myself? No, it would be a "we" thing, without a doubt. Also, there's federal issues with this. And it's tethered to so many other things that we could go into, but I'm not gonna be, I don't wanna touch into everything, from medical services to education and everything else. Because there is a certain subset of our society that's getting pushed aside. And I know there's not many African-Americans here tonight. I see one. But anyway, you know, when you think about it, that sector of the population, they're citizens. These are our citizens. These are American citizens. They are probably getting hurt the most by this. They're getting pushed aside. You're right, a lot of immigrants are coming in. They're getting all kinds of services and all kinds of services. But they're not just coming, and they're being welcomed today.
George, time, please.
So I mean, to answer your question, I would do anything I can to fight those insane policies, Green Light New York and Sanctuary City. But I would need help of my fellow council members to do that. That I could promise you. Any other questions?
I do wanna say too that the candidates are standing till the end. And at coffee time, what we usually do is gather for coffee and then we can speak individually. And sometimes people like to ask their questions on an individual basis. So if you don't get to ask a question now, you can always ask a question later.
Well, I thank you all again, and thank you for the question. And God bless you all. And importantly, God bless our country and God bless our community. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Our next candidate is Kristi Marmarado.
All right, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I really do appreciate it. I am Kristi Marmarado, and I'm running for city council here in District 13. I was born, raised, and educated here in the Bronx. I grew up in Throcknet. As an adult, I lived in Country Club in Palan Bay. I actually had an apartment right up the block on Bradford Avenue for a couple of years. And I currently reside in Morris Park with my family. I am a wife to an amazing husband, Gino. He's here to support me tonight, and he did not pay me to say that. And I'm a mom to a very special little girl who also goes to school here in Palan Bay at the Greek American Institute. I also have two parents, elderly parents, who live here within districts. My family is one of the forces as to why I am here tonight and one of the reasons of why I'm running for city council. Another reason I'm running for city council is public service. I have a life career. When I was younger, I knew that I wanted to help the community, but I just chose to do it in a healthcare setting. And I have a 23-year career in healthcare field. 16 of those years, I served District 13. So what I do for work, I'm an X-ray technologist, and I specialize in women's health services. And I work with a team of highly skilled individuals. And we devise a plan of actions to care for patients and people when they're at their most vulnerable stages of life. And right now, our community is at one of its most vulnerable stages. So I do feel that my training and skill set will translate well once I take the role of city council. And I know you're thinking, why would somebody in healthcare wanna get involved in politics? I kinda ask myself that question all the time. But it's because our community is being neglected, you know? Because of the policies and agenda of the current administration. And I wanna be the one to put an end to that and stop that. And first thing that I'd like to start with is public safety. I know, I want, I always back the NYPD, I always support them. But I wanna see more police in the community. I wanna see more cops on the street and more patrol cars at night. I think that we deserve that. Even though we're in a lower crime area, I still think that we deserve the numbers and the presence. I also wanna come up with some incentives to hire new cops. I have a couple of ideas. You know, hopefully they work, and it's stuff that wouldn't really interfere with the budget. I, as you know, I'm a local girl, and I graduated from St. Benedict's and Lehman High School. So I am a product of both public and private education here in District. And I will do anything to support a parent's choice for education for their children, whether it's charter schools, public schools, and private schools. One thing that I do adamantly oppose is the Just Home Initiative on the Jacoby campus. I wanna ensure the safety and protection of my community. This hits me home because I live 500 feet from where this project is taking place. You can see it from my front door. So I was on the board of the Mothers of 1900. And what we did was, we organized, and we organized quickly, which was good. We have petitions. My team, we have about 2,000 petitions signed by hitting the streets, and we only went out about three or four times, which is great. I work with the Morris Park Community Association, and we've obtained an attorney. And I helped with fundraising to offset the cost of litigation. I think we raised about $7,000 in one event, which was kind of small. Also, I've come up with alternative proposals for the property. I've come up with a few alternative proposals. But one of them, I wanna help support victims of violence, not the people that are committing the crimes. There's no place on that property for them. So if you want somebody that's gonna listen to you regardless of your age, your gender, your religion, or political affiliation, I am your girl. If you want somebody who is gonna advocate for your parents, your children, our community, like I've advocated for my patients for the last 23 years, I'm definitely your girl. And if you want somebody that has the strength, the energy, and the determination to get things done, I am your girl. So all I ask is your support, and in return, you will always have my support. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, well, I look forward to meeting everybody afterwards and having some coffee and talking to you one-on-one. And I appreciate the time here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Tiz, you're up.
Thanks, everything. Hi, I'm Phyllis Tiz Nasasio. I know a lot of you here from the zoning rallies that I attended. I know the issues you're facing in this community. I know the traffic on Harding Avenue getting to the bridge. I remember Miracle City. I did some petitions for George for those. So I've been fighting for this side of the community for a long time. The other side of the community, I sit on the community board. I am the chair of the education committee and the co-chair of the public safety committee. I also sit on the 49th Precinct Community Council. I am the secretary on that board. So I've been very involved in my community. I teach in both ends of the community. I teach at St. Teresa's, and I teach in St. Francis Xavier, which unfortunately is one of our closing schools this year. But to try to make lemonade out of lemons, I did put in a proposal to have that building taken over by 108 to make it an annex, because we've been missing a middle school in our ends of the community for a long time. So before the city tries to grab it for something else, I put in a proposal to have that made into the annex for 108 to bring sixth to eighth grade there. Hopefully, that goes through, and that would save part of that community. We don't want it taken for anything we don't want. What else have I been fighting? I brought the Loretta Park issue. It took us three years to get a park complete. It's still not done properly, but at least it's done. I've coached basketball, I've coached baseball. I've been all over. I did submit two proposals for the Just Home Project. One back in December to have that building turned into a women's health center. And then more recently, I also submitted a proposal to have it turned into an annex of the VA hospital. So our veterans on this end of the district do not have to travel all the way to Kingsbridge Road. Haven't heard anything back yet from the borough president, but both proposals were submitted to her. And that's about it. I'm gonna keep fighting. I'm a fighter. So if I get to City Hall, I will fight for you, for what you want. Any questions? Nothing? Easy group tonight.
I have a line I could ask, but just generally speaking, I just like asking the other two. I'm gonna bring up Vision Zero, the city's initiative on Vision Zero, right? Without getting any details of how I was gonna word it. What's your opinion on it? And what would you legislate going forward to continue the process?
Well, number one, the Bronxdale Avenue road died, which is a total disaster. It's a mess. It needs to be fixed. DOT does not wanna work with us. Keith Cal does not wanna work with us at all. I have met with Community Board 10, and I did some drive-throughs with Matt Cruz. We went around and looked at all problem areas in both sides, 10 and 11. And we are gonna work together to try to force them to be a little more understanding of what we need. We don't wanna do away with the bike lane on Bronxdale. We want it fixed. We want parking, bike lane, traveling. We can't have it the way it is. There's a school there, and it's endangering the kids.
I have a thing to bring up, and I did Bronxdale specifically, you know, speaking more about the program itself of saving lives and then commissioning, you know, light road signs. You mentioned the speed cameras and other.
Speed cameras?
25 mile an hour. Would you feel as anything that you wanna legislate if you became, you know?
I don't have anything against the speed counters. If you're speeding, it's a danger. So if you don't wanna take it, don't speed. We have a lot, I mean, on Seminole Avenue itself. They speed constantly up and down there. I would rather see more speed bumps to slow people down. I think that'll be safer. Anything else?
So did you have a question, Anthony?
Yeah. It's basically not a question to you per se, but to, we're in the Bronx, right? We're not in Florida. I mean, there's no emotion. No emotion in this room. So how do you expect to win and beat anybody? There's no emotion, and no question is a stupid question. But I don't see anybody, no emotion. We're dead. Everybody, it's like...
I understand what you're saying, but you know, not everybody shows their emotion outwardly. I think the fact that this room is filled with people shows that everybody, it shows that everybody is interested, and they're here, they're involved. So I thank everybody for that. I wanna particularly thank our candidates, Tiz and Kristi and George. The fact that you are here to protect our neighborhoods and putting yourself out there on the line, I know what you've been going through, you're trying to get signatures, and it's a thankless pursuit that you're doing. It kinda reminds me of when I was a teacher and when I was a principal. I think it's kind of the same thing, because you get it from all ends, but when you see the kids and, you know, the fact that they're thriving, it's worth everything. And I think that's probably the reason why you're all doing that. But I also wanna say this. I know everybody can't win. So somebody is going to win, and the rest of you are not. But I ask that you continue. I know many of you will anyway. But continue, because our neighborhoods, all of them, need good leaders, and it doesn't have to be in an elected position. We can do, you know, a lot of work not being elected as well. So, you know, I thank you all for that. I do have, we usually end with any elected that are here. And Stephen, do you have something to say from Natalia Fernandez's office? You don't need it, okay.
All right. Hey, everyone. My name is Stephen. I'm from the state Senator Natalia Fernandez's office. I'm gonna keep this very quick, because it is 8:30. We should all go home right now. So, you know... So, you know, right now, State Senator Natalia Fernandez, she's working up in Albany, working for the budget. And right now, in terms of office location, we are currently in Riverdale, but by May, we will be in the Throgs Neck area. And if you guys need any help, call us at 718-822-2049. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Steven. Before we break for coffee, we have a few announcements. Andrew has something that he feels very strongly about that he wants to say.
Okay, this is really a statement for whoever the candidate becomes. What I want to see is you untie the hands of the cops. Let them be cops. Don't allow them to be sued for any reason. They're supposed to be cops, and they're supposed to do a job. The present administration in this city, that communist bastard, is tying their hands and making them quit. So whoever wins, I want, that's my request from you. Untie their hands and let them do what they're there for.
Okay. Two quick announcements. I think most of you probably know this, but I think it's pretty important. We have a safe disposal event on April 29 from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, and that will be at Orchard Beach. And it's a way to recycle things that you can't recycle in the regular trash. So, you know, start getting your things ready now. And the other thing is, on April 1, we have new set-out times for trash. So make sure that you don't put anything out before 6 o'clock. It used to be 4 o'clock. Now it's 6, and if you have beds or trash cans that do not have tops, you have to put them out at 8 o'clock. I've been told that they're going to start to give fines, but you will get a warning first. But you know, you know what to do, and it's not that hard to do, and it's it's for a good reason, so let's all try to comply. Yes?
I got these in the mail, that you can't get rid of a tenant, that they can actually stay by?
Yes, there's a bill that's being proposed. It's called Good Cause Eviction. I think that many of you have gotten the same postcards that she has gotten. You know, I know, I've gotten them. I'm not gonna go into the details of it, but basically, it's going to affect small landlords. And it's going to tie their hands. So it's not something that we are for. I think you need to look into it. You can call actually, many of the things that we're complaining about, the people right now that are in charge, that would be in charge of that, would be Natalia Fernandez and Michael Benedetto. I spoke to Michael Benedetto. He is against it. So I don't know about Natalia Fernandez. I did call her office. Do you know how she feels about Good Cause Eviction?
So I work mainly in the district office, so I have no idea what's going up there.
Okay. Well, I did call and speak to staff there. They couldn't give me an answer. What they said was that she is listening to the community, and people that are for it or against it should call, okay? But it will affect small landlords. Also, it is in other places in New York, and despite the fact that it went through, it went through the court system and it was taken down. So, you know, I think that if it does go through, it has a good chance of not staying. So George?
The Good Cause Eviction does not apply to two and three-family homes as long as they are own-occupied. If they're own-occupied, two and three-family homes are not under Good Cause Eviction.
Oh, okay, so then it's for
Absentee landlords.
For
Absentee landlords that's not own-occupied, so it's subject to Good Cause Eviction.
Right, okay. So yes. Oh, we have it's, the 45th Precinct is having an Easter extravaganza on April 1, Saturday, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. in Ferry Point Park. So bring your kids. Any other announcements? No? Okay, so, again, yes.
As a senior citizen, I find it's going to be a problem for me to put garbage out at 6 o'clock when it's dark in the winter.
I don't think we have much of a choice. I think, you know, it's what they're trying to do, although we don't have a problem here with rats, many other places in the city have a problem. So they're trying it. I think we're just gonna have to suck it up and, you know, do as they ask, because you will get fined if you do not. So
Well, I wonder if I could leave it like on my property at the very last step of the 13 steps, and the garbage man would take it from there.
I don't You can ask your garbage man. I know that my, you know, the people that come to our block are very accommodating, but the law states that it has to be at the curb. So either they will help you, or they'll say, you know, it has to be at the curb, because, you know, I mean, they can do it for some people, if they do it for some people, then they have to do it for everyone. You know, it's, you're gonna have to see what your individual person
All issue in the dark. And many people, I myself
Right.
do not have the stuff studied in daylight.
I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I don't know. There's certainly nothing we can do about it, and I really think, I mean, you can complain, you're welcome to complain so that they understand. But, you know, it's something that's citywide, so I don't think that it's going to change. All right? And, yes. One more.
So the 45th Precinct Community Council is having their breakfast. It's Thursday, May 18 from 8:30 until 11:00 a.m. and it's at the SUNY Maritime Academy. It's a $20 donation. You can buy tickets from myself. You could come to the community council and buy tickets. You could buy from Annie, Bob Beeter, anybody on the council. The honorees this year are Angela Torres from St. Benedict's Food Pantry,